Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the May meeting of the Paulding County Planning Commission. At this time, if you have a mobile, audible, whatever kind of device that may make a sound, turn it off or turn it to silence so it doesn't interrupt the proceedings. Thank you very much. Paulding County Planning Commission is a recommending body for the applications that may be presented before us today. We'll be forwarding all of the business at hand, which is supposed to be four agenda items, to the Paulding County Board of Commissioners for their meeting. I've got a note. Yes, tomorrow's meeting has been rescheduled for, it says, May 25th. So, May 26?
May 25.
May 25, okay. That's all right, I don't keep up with the date. And that would be at 7:00 as well?
10:00 a.m.
10:00 a.m.
One session at 7:00 p.m. Record business.
Which will be when the vote takes place, correct? 7:00.
7:00.
So, anybody having business before this body today for whatever recommendations we make to the Paulding County Board of Commissioners, you would need to be in attendance at the 7:00 session tomorrow with the Board of Commissioners for the final dispensation of the application. Anybody wishing to speak, the applicant will be able to present when called upon. Applicant must be present for it to be considered. You have 15 minutes to present. That is cumulative time with anybody that may want to speak on the behalf of the application. So, as the applicant, you can use all of that time or reserve some for someone else to speak on behalf of it. You can also reserve some time for rebuttal later in the session. If anybody wishes to speak in opposition or may have questions, comments, or concerns related to an application, again, 15 minutes is assigned for that as cumulative time. So, if you line up at the podium and someone else behind you wishes to speak, please be mindful of that. I will signal you when the time is up. At this time, I'm going to ask if the Planning Commission has had an opportunity to review the minutes from the previous session of this body. If you have any questions, comments, concerns, edits, speak now. If not, I will entertain a motion with regard to the minutes from April 26, 2022. I have a motion to approve from Mr. Henson. I need a second. I have a second from Mr. Steele. All in favor? Motion passes 6-0 and 1. One item to state before we get started, and this is mostly housekeeping for the Planning Commission, I've asked that you add an entry after this first agenda item, which was the approval of the minutes for the public hearing we're about to engage in. We will take a vote for a recommendation going to the Board of Commissioners on that text amendment. So, at this time, I would like Director Littman to please come forward and introduce the text amendment.
All right, thank you. We adopted our new, majority of our Unified Development Ordinance in March, and as I've said many times, it's a living document. And in living with it for a few months, we found a few errors and we advertised for a change. And then we also found a few other things we wanted to change, so I'll be happy to go over those right now. Going in order from the Title II of the ordinance, the first changes are to Chapter 210, base districts, to the R-55 Active Adult Residential District. The main changes to this district are removing attached cottage dwellings and retirement community independent living from the list of permitted uses, and so we removed all references to those two types of uses. And there were changes made to, so that leaves that the only use you can have in R-55 is a single-family detached dwelling. And there are changes made raising some of the minimum lot size requirements. That's going to be 8,000 square feet with a minimum lot width at the building line of 60 feet, and the side yard setback is 12 feet. There was a section about, there were two sections about the buffers, so we removed one of them and left the stricter buffer that requires a 75-foot buffer along the front edge of any county road. And we added a section requiring a six-foot sidewalk along major collectors connecting to neighboring commercial developments. The next changes we made are in the same, the base district sections to B2, AML, and I-1, we added a use of motion picture and sound recording industries. We did a look at some other jurisdictions that have larger motion picture studios, and those districts that we have an hour seem to be appropriate homes for those. In the I-1 district, we are proposing to revise the wording of mini warehouses and self-storage units to strike trucks and trailers, and to clarify that the parking of boats and RVs is an auxiliary use, so it's not a main use. In order to have boat or RV storage, you would need to have mini warehouses or self-storage units. In the I-1 district, we also are deleting storage yards, except recyclable material merchant wholesalers from the list of special exception uses, and moving it to special use permits. That same, and that's it for I-1. For I-2, we are adding truck and trailer storage to the list of special use permits. So, that also required changes to the supplemental use standards, so those uses were added to the proper sections there. In Chapter 230, the supplemental use standards, we also, this was one of the initial errors we found, we added a Item C to the list of provisions for accessory structures and uses, adding the districts A1 and AB to the animal production and aquaculture excluding hog and pig farming, special exception use. And we added animal production and aquaculture excluding hog and pig farming with associated provisions in ER, R1, and R2. And we had an error where we listed guest houses as a special exception use in A1, ER, R1, and R2, but we had put the requirements in the special use section, so we are clarifying that. We are correcting, there was a numerical error in that section as well, and we are fixing that. That was in the special use permit section. We are striking the guest house provisions since they were moved to the special exceptions, and added storage yards except recyclable material merchant wholesalers, and truck and trailer parking. We also, due to some of the changes to R-55, that necessitated changes to Chapter 240, which is the standards applying to all districts, so we removed the references to attached cottage dwellings and retirement communities, and we just cleaned up the wording on a reference to Table 240.4. That's a quick, brief overview of the changes, and also attached in everybody's packets, and there are some copies in the back, are copies of Ordinance 2208 that will, that details the changes that we are recommending.
Part of opening this up for comments or questions from the Planning Commission or the Board of Commissioners, please make sure that you turn your mic on before you speak so that it can be carried for those that are streaming and viewing. Changes that you're making, I mean, that's a substantial number of changes. Is it due to just reading it or experiencing application of it?
A little of both. We found several errors, just especially where something in the past had been a permitted use and it became a special exception use, and we realized we just put it in the wrong spot.
All right. Are there any questions from the Planning Commission to Director? Any questions from Board of Commissioners?
Anne, you want to refresh us on how many pages were in this entire document?
I think when we're all said and done, we're going to have over 800. But right now, until we, and we plan, just to give you an update, just as a reminder to everyone, that the Unified Development Ordinance consists right now of Title I, which is administration, Title II, which is zoning, Title III, which staff is working on, which is an update, a complete, in some cases overhaul and update to our development regulations, Title IV is signs, Title V is telecommunications, and then there is an appendix. So, I think when all is said and done, we're probably going to have over 800 pages for your reading pleasure.
One of the most impressive things about this document is the volume of vocabulary definitions that you have in it, which, you know, when you're getting into a document like this that handles zoning or development regulations, the more explicit you can be with those definitions, the safer the ground it is you're walking on, so.
Sure, okay, additional changes?
I'm sure. Ms. Ewer?
Hi, Anne. Yes, I do have a question. So, on the R-55, I see that you are removing the square footage requirements of the one, two, and three bedroom. Is that correct?
That was for the retirement community independent living, and since we are eliminating that use, we did not need those requirements.
Okay, so...
That was only for retirement communities.
Okay, so that's not for the, the single-family active adult?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I don't want to overlook our member from the school board, Jacob Wicks. And you can turn your name tag back around so you can join the others. Those are for everybody behind you. I just wanted to make sure I didn't mispronounce your name or misstate your name. Do you have any questions with regard to the presentation so far? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, I will open the floor to public comment. Anybody wishing to speak, you can come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair. Hearing none, I will now close the public comment portion for this public hearing. And at this time, with the Planning Commission, I will entertain a vote to recommend approval as a yes or no, or denial as a no, or an abstention if you have a reason. So, at this point, would somebody please make a motion with regard to the text amendment?
I make a motion to adopt the amendments to the ordinance.
I have a motion to approve then from Mr. Leggett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Steele. All in favor? Motion passes 6-0 and 1. Thank you very much. And again, this will be forwarded for consideration by the Board of Commissioners to tomorrow's meeting at 7:00. All right, Mr. Robinson?
All right, good afternoon, everyone. First zoning application is 2022-14Z, application by David and Kristy Cole, requesting to rezone 1.3 acres from A1 Agricultural to R2 Suburban Residential. It's to gift land to a daughter to build a single-family residence. Property is located in Land Lot 1289, District 2, Section 3. The proposed property is north of Nebo Road, west of Clyde Cole Road. It's in Commission Post 3, and staff has recommended approval, and the applicants are present.
The applicant will please come around, sign in, state your name, address your comments to the chair. Again, as a reminder, you have 15 minutes to present. Anybody else wishing to speak on your behalf can use that time as well.
Sign in right here.
And you need only sign in if you're going to be speaking, so if both of you are going to speak, please sign in.
Okay. Well, as he said, we're just requesting to rezone 1.3 acres of our land on Nebo Road to our daughter, so she can build a house. That's pretty simple.
Nothing controversial than that, huh?
No. We have land, we need to, we have children that are getting older, so you'll probably see us in the next few years because we have two more.
Amen, sister.
Two more, two more kids.
All right. Are there any questions to the Coles for consideration of the application from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners, any questions?
I'm just curious, how many more properties there are?
96 acres.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, at this time, I will entertain a motion with regard to Application 2022-14-Z.
I make a motion approved.
Motion to approve by Mr. Aston.
Sir.
I have a second by Mr. Leggett. All in favor? Motion passes 6-0 and 1. It will be forwarded to tomorrow night's meeting at 7:00. I'll repeat myself quite a bit. Tomorrow night's at 7:00. You do need to be present for it to be considered. You're waiting on me, aren't you?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Robinson?
All right. Next application is 2022-16Z, application by Michael Hughes, Paulding County Industrial Building Authority, requesting to rezone approximately 127 acres from R2 Suburban Residential to AML Advanced Manufacturing Logistics for a master industrial developer to develop Silver Comet Industrial Park. Property is located in Land Lots 907, 908, 965, 966, District 2, Section 3. Post site is on, located both on the north and south sides of Bill Crook Parkway. This is west of Laird Road and also west of State Route 92, Hiram Douglasville Highway. It's in Commission Post 3. Staff has recommended approval with six printed stipulations, and I know the applicant's present. We have one email that was in opposition that I provided prior to the meeting to everyone, and I've had a call with some concerns with an adjoining property owner to the west, concerned about noise and fences and security and things like that.
And you, the applicant is present?
Applicant is present.
If you would please come around, please sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Mr. Hughes could not be here today. I'm Tom Morris, Chairman of the IBA.
Welcome, Mr. Morris.
Good afternoon to all of you. The Paulding County Industrial Building Authority acquired this property, 127 acres on land of Bill Crook Parkway, in 2019. Our vision was to have this land developed as an industrial logistics park in the future. The site is approximately a quarter of a mile away from Highway 92, is currently being widened, and also we're near Graystone Powers Headquarters. The goal of acquisition was, and still is, to attract capital investment and to create jobs for the community. Based on this vision, the IBA requested, issued a request for qualifications seeking development, a development partner toward the end of 2020 and early '21. This resulted in the IBA selecting and establishing a partnership with SK Commercial Realty/Goldenrod Companies. Since this time, we and SK and Goldenrod have been working diligently to get this company set up. The efforts have accumulated, have accumulated with IBA and SK and Goldenrod coming to terms on a real estate purchase agreement that would result in their initial acquisition of approximately 53 acres in order to facilitate the development of a bill-to-suit project for a tenant that will be locating in Paulding County. To accommodate this proposed development, the IBA is proposing the project to be rezoned to Advanced Manufacturing Logistics, AML. This is one of the new zoning categories approved by the Board of Commissioners during the summer of 2021. This zoning district is provided for large-scale facilities engaged in research and development, manufacturing, and transportation/ logistics located close to major transportation routes, which is consistent with this proposal. To provide some additional information on the project and developmental details, I would like to introduce Zach Marquess with Goldenrod Companies. We will both be available to answer questions that you might have.
Thanks, Tommy. Zach Marquess with Goldenrod, Director of Investments for the Southeast. So, we're really excited about this project. As Tommy mentioned, we've been working on it for a couple of years now, and it's finally come to fruition. So, I can say we will hopefully be in the next year, year and a half, be bringing over 150 jobs to Paulding County. This was a very difficult and strenuous negotiation. Obviously, they looked all over the Southeast. This serves as their headquarters for Florida, Carolinas, Alabama, and Georgia, as well as Tennessee. And so, we are very happy and pleased to announce that Ottoman selected Paulding County due to the partnership with the IBA, as well as y'all's support. From a pure development standpoint, we will be kicking off the park with the first building. It will be around 367,000 square feet, and it will be top-end industrial development. I'm happy to share any other projects that we've done, but we've already engaged with the tenant. I was actually in Dallas last week. I've seen their facility in New Jersey. I've seen their facility in Dallas. Both are extremely impressive. These are not your typical, just standard warehouse buildings. They'll be, be top of the, top of the, top of the environment for industrial development. It will be completely fenced in. One of the main reasons for choosing Paulding County was, was security, as well as safety. So, those are two of the things that we pitched and we expect to deliver on with y'all's support. From a noise perspective, we will do everything in our control, as we always do with our developments, to limit that noise, and are excited to get a final product that brings not only jobs but millions of dollars of investment, both short-term and near-term through property taxes. So, with that, that's, that's all I have for you today, but excited to kick off this development and bring, bring 150-plus jobs to Paulding County.
Just to kick it off with the questioning, there are six listed stipulations that have been posted by the, recommended by the county staff. Are you familiar with those stipulations?
George, is that what we talked about yesterday? Yes?
DOT relationships. There's also...
And the properties that demand to work, we want a certain...
Yeah, yeah, we work with the IBA on sewer already to date, so we are aware.
You're in agreement with those six stipulations?
I would like to read the sewer one just a little bit in more detail, but yeah. We, we know there's no sewer on site.
And you said you've seen two other facilities by this company, one in New Jersey and one in someplace called Dallas.
Dallas.
Is that Texas?
Yes, yes, Dallas, Texas.
We don't really recognize them, so...
I like this Dallas better, I'll say that.
Are there any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission?
What does that company do, again?
So, they're aftermarket truck and trailer parts. They have around six offices, I believe, four in the United States and two in Canada. So, they have a west, western headquarters, one in Chicago, obviously Dallas, and then New Jersey, and then the two in Canada, so this will serve as the Southeast regional head.
And they propose using all five of these buildings?
No, this is just for building one. 367,000 square feet is just the first building.
Which represented here is a previous site plan, right?
Correct, yeah. And so, that will be the farthest to the west, farthest building to the west.
It shows 240 currently, right?
Correct, yeah. It's been a little bit updated since here. They actually needed more space, which we thought would be good for more jobs, so.
Any other questions to the applicant?
Yeah, I have...
Is this an actual manufacturer type of...
Distribution.
This is all warehouses, distribution?
Correct, correct. This is not, no heavy manufacturing. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ewer?
Yes, I'm sorry. So, I have a couple of questions. So, the whole site is being rezoned, I understand, and you're just here representing the one 367, 367,000 square foot building?
That is all we have planned at the moment. We're working with the IBA. We will take down the whole park eventually and continue to build it out as we get tenants. And I can tell you, we have received interest for building two, so I hope to be back sooner rather than later. But yeah, we'd be asking for the whole park to be rezoned at this time.
Okay, and so you are in charge of developing the park?
We have an agreement with the IBA, correct.
Okay, all right. And who is the contractor going to be?
So, as of now, it's, nothing is set in stone, but we're talking with Flintco out of Memphis. They do a lot of these industrial building developments, and we've actually done a similar project in New Braunfels, Texas, as well. It's a good relationship.
Okay, and who's doing, who's doing the bill-to-suit? The IBA or...
We will, yes.
You're doing the bill-to-suit?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
So, we will purchase the land from the IBA and be in full control of the development process.
Any further questions from the Planning Commission?
What are the chances that you would use local contractors for some of the, like sewer and, and some of the infrastructure?
Yeah, so we're obviously evaluating all of that and most, most likely will. I know we've used a local civil engineer to start out with, and then as we get deeper into the plans, when we get closer to construction drawings, we'll really start to dig into the submarket, but we just haven't gotten that far in, in design yet.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners, any questions?
Well, would you like the house here? Can you come and live?
You know, I, I would love that. I'm right down the road, so if, we have offices, I don't know if I mentioned that, in Atlanta, so in the Battery. So, we're, we're local now and excited to invest in Atlanta and Georgia, so.
Ms. Ewer, can you help me out with a nice one?
Mr. Wicks, any comment? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition to this application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, at this time, I will entertain a motion with regard to Application 2022-16-Z, and please consider the six listed stipulations recommended by staff.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Mr. Henson.
With the six stipulations listed.
With the listed six stipulations. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Ms. Fitzgerald. All in favor? Motion passes 6-0 and 1. Again, it will be forwarded to tomorrow night's meeting at 7:00 for the vote by the Board of Commissioners. Applicant must be present for it to be considered.
Okay, last application is 2217Z. It's application by Terry S. Boomer, professional engineer on behalf of GX Development LLC, requesting to waive and remove required sewer stipulations 5 through 9, which was set forth in a prior rezoning application, 20560Z, for the proposed development of a 3,600-square-foot convenience store slash gas station. Property is located in Land Lot 1185, District 2, Section 3. Site address is 873 Williams Lake Road. It's south of Williams Lake Road and on the east side of Highway 92, also known as Hiram Douglasville Highway. It's in Commission Post 3. Staff has recommended denial on this one, but if the board chooses to approve, there's four requested stipulations.
Is the applicant present? If you would, he'll provide you the sign-in sheet.
My name's Terry Boomer. I represent GX, I'm a civil consulting engineer. We're the engineers of record. We're at 211 East Main Street, Canton, Georgia. I represent GX Development, GX Properties. They are in the business of convenience stores, and we develop a lot of convenience stores around the state and nation. We've got several in Alabama going right now, and we'd like to bring retail and commercial to Paulding County. One of the challenges that we found, and the reason why we're here, is the lack of sewer, and the lack of sewer thwarts some commercial development. So, we would like to bring, now, we don't have the jobs in the tax base that the prior applicant had, but we do have jobs and we do have a tax base we'd like to bring forward. Our site plan was, if we could put our site plan up, our site plan was developed based on the rezoning of 2005, and, but a limited portion. If you look at the driveway that extends from our property all the way to the east, it lines up with the school driveway across the street, so that was one of the stipulations. We agree to all the stipulations set forth. We would like to waive the stipulations, of course, 5 through 9, requesting that we provide sewer and a master pump station for this basin. It's the sewer, I think Cory Coats quoted me, maybe 2,000 feet away, but we don't have gravity flow to it. So, the ability for a single user to tie to sewer is limited logistically as well as economically. economically. The four conditions that, that staff put before us is acknowledging the exclusion of items five through nine, but then implementing those back to the residual and remaining, remaining property. The, and we do acknowledge that the four comments that staff has placed for this rezoning, and we're in agreeance with, as is the owner and developer. I'll entertain any questions, and I appreciate the chair and board and panel to hear our requests.
Well, with the recommendation from staff with regard to denial, but then giving the alternative that if we were to recommend approval, it be with the four listed stipulations, I had questions that I may mention to our attorney for the board here, and then I wanted to go ahead and ask that question. I would ask, if you would, for convenience to you, if you remain where you are so that you can utilize the microphone when we come back to you.
Sure.
Ms. Ashmore, Director Ashmore for Paulding Water and Sewer. Question was, as these stipulations that are being asked of us to remove from the prior rezoning dealt with sewer in the sewer basin and the requirements that were in place at that time? My question is, by removing those stipulations, does it then cease being a requirement under the regulations as they currently exist? Because I believe that was what would apply to the zoning category. Any new zoning action would require them still to comply with the existing regs as of today? You may be able to state that better than I did.
As you recall, the, there were a number of stipulations previously placed on, on rezonings that were restatements of what is in our development regs. These, these stipulations that are requested to be removed are in our development regulations.
I'm sorry, could you pull the microphone closer to you? I just want to make sure.
I'm sorry. For once, I'm too quiet. The, I'll start back at the beginning. When these, when these stipulations were written, they were a, there was a tendency to include a number of things in the stipulations that were also in the development regulations. And so they were duplicative of what is in our development regs and remains in our development regs.
So the requirements that those stipulations reference are actually still in play with or without them?
That's correct. It's a flight lift station, whether it's in the stipulation or not. It is, it, as well as extending to property lines, up drainage features is a requirement. Sorry, I didn't bring my package up here with me to just cite them each specifically. The, thank you. The, there is also a, with the incorporation of these two, of the two suggested stipulations, what those do is those recognize the, the agreement that we have with Cobb, and also the, the fact that we have, do have some provisions within ordinance to allow a development not, who is, who does not have, have septic, or does not have sewer available to do a temporary septic, but they still have to pay the Cobb connection, the fees that are required under our agreement with Cobb County.
By your estimation, again, this is hypothetical until it's voted on and then moved toward the Board of Commissioners, but the four listed stipulations that are being recommended, let me go back, the stipulations that are being requested to be removed, does Paulding County Water and Sewer have an issue with those stipulations being removed, and is it mitigated by the addition of these four?
We do not have a problem with the removal of those stipulations as long as we add in those additional stipulations.
Mr. Stew?
I have a question, Ms. Ashmore. If we leave the zoning stipulations the way they are, can they still come and look at doing the septic, as you were just speaking about? Still paying Cobb for the intergovernmental agreement? Or does keeping these stipulations not allow that? If they do away with these stipulations and go under the 2007 intergovernmental agreement, we have a Cobb?
They would still be held to?
The same way. So whether it stays the way it is or we change it?
We're still under those.
It's going to be in the same boat. So either way, is there an option that they provide for sewer and tie them later? Or mandatory sewer either way?
And, and the, I'd like to point out, the, the availability of sewer by gravity is extensive, and is, is it an extended distance? We're talking about going down a tributary to Sweetwater Creek and then across to the Cobb County line to be able to connect to, to our sewer for that basin. It would be the, the first project along, in that section of the Sweetwater Basin.
More questions to the director from Planning Commission?
Is there any benefit at all dropping these to Paulding County? It's Washington.
It is. There, there's no, there's no benefit to, to Paulding County nor detriment to Paulding County.
If, if it is approved with these four stipulations, other words, we remove the existing ones as requested by the applicant, but add these four, which he has stated, and don't let me put words in your mouth, that you agree with the four, does that, it, you know, I agree with you, does it, is that going to be something that they would have to seek relief for some other situation through a waiver process?
No, sir, I believe it's directly addressed in the, in, in the policies and ordinances.
Because you have the stipulations as they go through zoning, you have the development regulations that are supposedly set in stone, to the degree that there are waiver processes that you can apply for as well, that's what I'm asking. So again, I may have gone around.
It's, it's all covered in the, in the development regs and ordinances.
Any other questions to the director?
Hi, Ms. Ashmore, I have a couple of questions. So, so basically, unless this is approved with the four stipulations, right, then that parcel as being zoned, is already being zoned as commercial, correct? Is it, isn't it already a commercial zone property?
It is, it is.
It cannot be utilized as commercial because all commercial in that, is, you're in the mandatory sewer basin, right?
Correct.
So whether it be this user or any other user, it seems that it's very cost prohibitive to bring sewer to that site to make it a commercial site. Is that correct?
I would say that it is very, it is expensive to, for a single, a single property like this to bring sewer to them.
Okay, so even though we have the, the commercial zoning, the benefit of it being commercial to Paulding County, which is the additional income of taxes and revenue and so forth, we would not have that. I mean, what, what other type of user would it be, would be a, a good user other than you're saying that a single user?
I can't, I, I can't speak to that. I, I will say that that has been addressed with, that is being addressed with the UDO as we've already implemented changes to look at sewer availability before it comes to you for rezoning.
Okay, I understand.
By my understanding too, I mean, we're actually looking, in my opinion, at a situation where six of one and half a dozen of the other, it depends on which side we're talking about. You can land on the approval of it or the denial of it, the end result is going to be extremely similar.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So it is my understanding that these stipulations, that the applicant is requesting be removed from this zoning, that these stipulations are basic, their development regulation or ordinance requirements, that they exist regardless of whether or not they were added to the stipulation list when this property was originally rezoned back in 2005. This is sometimes an example of the no good deed goes unpunished. There's a, there's an idea out there that sometimes people would come after their zoning was approved and they would say, "I didn't know these things were required. No one said, said anything about them during my zoning application." Well, back then, there was a practice to add many, many things that were already required by law, and really as a matter of convenience and information to the applicant, they were additionally added as stipulations. That is my understanding, the case with these. This is the law in Paulding by ordinance or by regulation. Whether or not you have them in there or not, the law must be followed if the applicant seeks to develop the property in this particular commercial way. Now, to the extent that the property is zoned commercial, that allows you to engage in certain uses of the property. However, simply because it may be zoned commercial, doesn't mean that the applicant doesn't also have to comply with infrastructure requirements, whether that be water, sewer, development of the land itself, which may be very costly. They can still engage in a commercial use as long as they comply with the requirements. If the property were zoned residential and their idea was to add a convenience store to there, no, you wouldn't be able to do that because zoning would prohibit it. But the zoning does not prohibit it, there may be other challenges from a regulatory and ordinance base. Hopefully that answers a little bit of the question.
Any questions? We're going to go back to the applicant. Mr. Boomer? I wanted to go through that exercise for a reason. I've complained more than anybody here would care to hear me do so about restatement of development regulations as stipulations in zoning, and I understand the reasons why, and it's, that actually explains it more to me, Mr. Phillips, but still, do you understand the impact of what we're talking about?
Well, certainly, I understand, and Mr. Phillips brings up a, a question for me. I've got, now, the owner has, excuse me, 23 acres, 24 acres, 25 acres that can't be developed in a commercial capacity. If Mr. Phillips stated that it's law that must be followed, it can't be followed logistically on this property until somebody comes along with a use that will facilitate the, the amount of money needed to provide the infrastructure. The infrastructure for this basin now becomes a master lift station for the basin and a force main, because you still can't do gravity. So does the force main, now, we, in, in that regard, we comply with the ordinance and code, we're, we're putting in, and, and the stipulations, we're putting in the master lift station and the force main, however, no downstream residents will be able to tie into the force main.
Right.
Only the folks that can tie into the, this basin. This basin, however, this is not the low point of this basin, and the lift station that would go on this 24-acre track is very limited in the, the surrounding properties that it could serve. So I want to, when I leave here, I just want to fully understand Mr. Phillips' statement, and let's restate it and put it into record, that this property has to be developed if it's going to remain commercial and provide the required infrastructure. That's what, that's what I heard.
What you heard, I believe, is essentially correct.
Okay, okay.
What you're asking us to do, and what we're here to do as this, this body, and again, a recommending body to the Board of Commissioners, is consider whether or not to remove those past stipulations at your request and what impact that's going to have. Well, the impact, and it's something that I figured was right in hearing our, our water director come forward and, and, and say that, just spelled it out for me, it's exactly right. It doesn't change the situation on the ground for that commercial piece of property.
Right.
There are still ordinances which by definition are the laws for the county for development regulations that you would have to still contend with.
And, and my next question then is, code and ordinance, is there a variance or a waiver to?
That's one of the questions I just asked as well, and that is something that you would be able to determine after this meeting adjourns, because we don't act in the capacity of operations for the county.
Okay.
We're, we're only, again, recommending body for the stipulations as it relates to use of property.
Okay, perfect.
So if they were to make a recommendation to approve with the four stipulations, those would be removed, the ones you've requested would be removed, these four would be added, essentially, to the pre-existing stipulations that remain, and then the Board of Commissioners would then have to determine if that is an appropriate thing that they want to do. After that's settled, it would be upon you to go and speak with Ms. Ashmore, more than likely, to determine what other options are at your disposal.
Perfect, thank you.
Robinson?
To make just a, a statement regarding staff recommendation, I just want to, from a, from a practical approach to it, we don't just look at this site, we have to look at the whole basin, and how would this, this with another product, another opportunity where the commercial, residential, or whatever in that basin, they would have that same right to come back and ask the same? So we have to look at the big picture when we're looking at.
Well, is there anything staff would like to add, that if, if we were to approve this, and again, I am still speaking hypothetically, if we were to approve this, how would this change on this acreage of property affect the remaining portion? Would there be a negative, a negative impact to the remaining property or a negative impact to this property?
Well, at this time, with the, the stipulations that's recorded in there, if approved, the remaining 23 acres would, these stipulations would remain on that remaining part of the property, if it would just be for the two-acre site.
But again, it's the same, they would still be under the same requirements, the entirety of the property.
That's correct.
Are there any questions? I'm sorry if I've complicated it for anybody, I just had to get that straight in my head, so. Any questions to staff or Mr. Boomer?
That's one of the problems I have with, one of the problems I have with is I think it's setting the precedence for future development along that corridor, and it, that is something that right now we have a chance to protect, and I think it's something we need to do.
Well, not disagreeing with you, but, and, and just as a statement, until you have infrastructure in place, you know, that's going to, you can zone it whatever you wish, but if the infrastructure's not there to support it, then maybe there's a better use for it in another way. I mean, I'm not dismissing the commercial, the commercial aspect of the viability of this property, however, if you don't have sewer and it's going to be an expensive endeavor for someone to locate a, a store at that location and create the sewer connection needed to support it, you know, it's probably an improbability at that point.
I do have a question. What is, Chris, what is the future land use for this parcel and for the surrounding parcels in that area?
That, excuse me, that corridor we're looking at, is something more of a business corridor, since it's been four-laned and everything. Nobody here is opposed to the requested development out there at all. It's just, when you, when you look at these requirements, you're going to find them in other parcels out there for other type of developments, and I'm just, just saying, that could be possible. You may see another one down the road for another type of use. And, which is, that's fine, whichever way it goes, I'm just saying, there's potential for other type of uses that may pop up.
So this is, so you're saying for this corridor, the highest and best use and the the future? future land use is commercial?
That is one thing that we'll be studying as part of the planning process.
Right, so it's kinda like a catch-22, right? It's commercial, but there's no.
Yeah, you want the commercial.
But the sewer situation is?
And in this case here, in 2005, negotiations with Cobb County was ongoing, and nobody predicted that things would crash, and I'm sure that this applicant back then, the idea was sewer's gonna be down there in just a few years. And unfortunately, things changed.
Well, who was, was it the county projecting to bring sewer there, or the thought was other developers were gonna come and bring the sewer, and then it could expand that way?
Just, it was a collaboration of public and private.
Thank you.
From a planning process, though, you take a look at the average daily traffic count along 92, you would automatically assume that this is going to be a commercial thoroughfare through 92 all the way to Douglasville. So, you know, from a future land use map and from a planning perspective, speaking as a person who works for a city, yes, I would look for it to be a commercial location, but you also understand that whether it's gonna be built out by the government, being sewer and water, and transportation is going to augment the roads as necessary in order to sustain service, level of service on the roads, something's gonna have to be invested in that area, whether it be public or private, in order for that to sustain itself. Are there any questions further from Mr. Boomer?
Your client owns all 23 acres. Do they propose, do they have any future proposals for the rest of the property? Any other?
Not at this time.
I'm gonna ask, and again, you can stay where you are in case we come back around to you, is there anyone else here that wishes to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition to the application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, you did have some minutes remaining. If you want to add anything to your statement, we'll be happy to consider that.
No, I respect the board and their decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. At this time, I will entertain a motion with regard to application 2022-17-Z.
I make a motion to deny.
I second.
I have a motion to deny by Mr. Steele. I have a second by Mr. Leggett. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes five, one, and one. And again, all of these items will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners meeting, including this one, tomorrow night at 7:00 PM. Is there anything further, Mr. Robinson, I need to mention?
Oh, good. Thank you, everyone, for being here.
And I'd like to extend my thanks to you, Director Lippman and Director Ashmore. Thank you for your contributions to the discussion today. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Mr. Henson. I have a second by Mr. Aston. All in favor? Motion passes six, zero, and one. Have a nice June.